Good. I would like to, oh, are you ready? Okay, all right. You're ready in your end too, okay. All right. I would like to call the February twenty eighth, twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Charlotte zoning board of adjustment session. I am Douglas Wilson, chairman. Also sitting on today's board is Debra Dryden, Tariq Hamid, Hamilton Court, and John Floyd, and all of them are present today. Also present are Lisa McCarter, our planning project manager, Tariq Hagler Gray, our senior assistant city attorney, Jill Sanchez Myers, also our senior assistant city attorney, Terry Edwards, clerk to the board, Candy Thomas, who is our court reporter. I would like to start by acknowledging that we are conducting this meeting in person, and this is the second in-person meeting of the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-three of the Charlotte zoning board of adjustment. And as always, I'd like to ask for your patience today as we proceed. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, participants, and presentations. The zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-judicial board that is governed by the North Carolina general statutes and the Charlotte zoning ordinance. We conduct evidentiary hearings on requests for variance and appeals, among other requests. Before we begin to hear the cases on today's agenda, I would like to provide some important information on the steps that were taken to ensure that each party's due process rights are protected as we proceed. Notice of this meeting was provided to the applicant and the public in several ways. Notice of today's hearing was mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of each subject property and notified the property owners of the in-person meeting. Notification letters also stated to contact the city immediately if there were any objections to the cases being heard on today's agenda. Notice was also provided by placing signs on each property and by publishing notice on the city's website. The notice for today's meeting contained information about means by which the public can access today's proceeding. Finally, any individual wishing to participate in today's evidentiary hearings were required to sign up prior to today's proceedings. This information was also included on the board's website. The order of the recommendation agenda would be as follows. The zoning administrator or zoning staff member will identify the case and recommend approval of the variance with any recommended conditions based on specific reasons. The chairperson will ask if anyone wants to speak in opposition. If there is such a person, then the case would be moved to the regular agenda and will be heard at a later date. The chairperson will ask if the board has questions for staff or if there is any reason the board wishes to move the case to the regular agenda. The chairperson calls for a motion and a second to approve the variance. The chairperson will hold a roll call vote. The order of the agenda would be as follows. All parties who plan to give testimony pro or con must be sworn in. A zoning staff member will explain why a permit was denied or why a variance was requested. The board may, excuse me, question the staff member, and then the applicant may question the staff member. The applicant presents their testimony for this case. The board may question the applicant and the staff member may question the applicant. The applicant may present sworn witnesses, but they will be subject to questioning. Other parties wishing to speak pro or con will be given a reasonable time to present sworn testimony. The staff and then the applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. The chairperson calls for a motion and a second to approve the variance. The chairperson will hold a roll call vote. After hearing each case, the board will review the case and render a decision. This is usually done in closed deliberations after hearing each regular case. However, the board may elect to take up to thirty days to render a decision. You may remain present during the deliberations or you may call the zoning staff after the session to receive the decision of the board. All exhibits must remain with the board. Exhibits were recommended to be provided to the clerk no later than twelve P M. on Monday, February twenty seventh. If your case is not appealed to Superior Court after thirty days, you may pick them up or they will be destroyed. If you feel there is a conflict of interest of any member of the board or an association that would prejudice your case, please let it be known at the start of your case. The board is acting in a quasi-judicial capacity for purposes of this hearing and can only accept sworn testimony. While the board will not specifically exclude hearsay evidence, it is only given limited weight. The North Carolina State Bar has issued an advisory opinion that is the unauthorized practice of law for any individual who is not an active member of the bar to appear for another or otherwise assist or represent another at a quasi-judicial hearing on zoning and land use matters. All applicants should have been provided with a copy of that advisory opinion as part of the application packet. If you are a property owner or a non-lawyer here on behalf of property owner and have not received a copy of that opinion, please notify the clerk the documents will be provided to you. If, as a result of this advisory opinion, the applicant would like to request a continuance of his or her case, the board will consider such a request at the start of that case. Appeal from this board is to the Methanburg County Superior Court. You have thirty days from the date of the board's written decision in which to appeal in accordance with North Carolina general statute one sixty D dash four zero five D. In order to receive a written copy of the decision, any aggrieved party must file a written request for a copy of the board's decision by filling out the form which must be filed with the board's clerk or chairperson at the time of the hearing of your, of the case. You will hear four cases today. We're going to have a continuance on two of them, and we will get to those once I open the meeting. That's it. So the first case we're going to hear is case number twenty twenty-two dash zero seven seven.
Would you like to vote on the continuances first?
Yes, sure. I'd like to, you said vote on it?
On the continuance, I know the twenty twenty-two zero seven seven was asking for a continuance.
Okay, all right. So if I'm hearing you correctly, the board will have to, is there a motion to provide a continuance for this case until, I think you said June?
Yes, and this is for the second case on, it's on the regular agenda, and the applicant has requested a continuance through June, and staff's in support of it.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's still moved for continuance.
Okay, motion been properly moved by Mrs. Dryden, second by Mr. Ford, Mr. Floyd, excuse me. Now we're going to move to a roll call vote, Mr. Floyd. All right, Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Okay, Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Okay, Wilson, yes. Okay, so case number twenty twenty-two dash zero seven seven has been moved to June. Okay. Next case would be case number twenty twenty-three dash zero eleven, and that's also been, the applicant has also requested for a continuance in that case. Yes, I saw Mr. Murray, he's here, okay. Is there a certain date you want to move that to, or?
We're just requesting to next month.
Next month, all right, so that's March, okay. All right. Is there a motion to move this case two zero two three dash zero one one to March?
I'll make that motion to move it and approve the continuance.
Okay. All right, motion's been moved by Ms. Dryden, second by Mr. Floyd. Now we will do a roll call vote, Mr. Floyd? All right, Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Okay, Wilson, yes. Right, great. So now we're moving back to the recommended agenda, and the first case on there is two zero two three dash zero one twelve. Lisa, of course, I will have to swear you in. Bible there. Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in a matter at hand? Okay, great.
All right, our first case is a residential rear yard variance request. The applicant's requesting a twelve-foot variance from the required forty-five-foot rear yard to allow the expansion of a non-conforming structure in the established rear yard. And I'll give you a minute to look over your findings. Exhibit number one is a vicinity map of the property. Exhibit number two is a zoning map. The property is zone R three, single family, and it's surrounded by other R three properties. Exhibit number three is an aerial map of the property. Exhibit four is a close-up aerial map of the property. Exhibit five is background. The property was subdivided in nineteen twenty-three, and there's a home on the property that was built in nineteen twenty-eight. Exhibit number six is the variance request. The nineteen twenty-eight home encroaches twelve feet into the required forty-five-foot rear yard, and since it predates the ordinance, it meets the definition of a non-conforming structure. The applicant states they would like to do renovations, a vertical addition, and possibly reconstruction in the established rear yard. Non-conforming structure can only be expanded in the compliant area and not within the required forty-five-foot rear yard. So the applicants are requesting a twelve-foot variance to allow them to expand the home using the established thirty-three-foot rear yard. So without the variance, they could only expand within this area, not past the blue. Exhibit number seven is variance criteria. The zoning ordinance requires all standards to be met. Unnecessary hardships must result from strict application of the ordinance. The hardship must be peculiar to the property. The hardship must not result from actions taken by the applicant, and the request must be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and uphold public safety. Exhibit number eight is considerations. Staff finds the request meets the standards for granting a variance in the zoning ordinance. The hardship was not caused by the applicants. The applicants purchased the home in twenty twenty-two with the existing encroachment from the original nineteen twenty-eight home construction. The hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property because the rear angle of the property creates an irregular building footprint with the depth ranging from twenty-four to seventy-three feet. The variance would permit the home to maintain its current depth of fifty-five feet, which is compliant with other homes in the area or consistent with other homes in the area that range from forty-two to seventy feet in depth. And that's just measured from aerial photography. So the existing home is fifty-five feet in this area. Since the rear line kind of goes like that. Exhibit nine is considerations. The requested variance meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. It will not adversely affect adjacent properties because the established rear yard has existed for ninety-five years and won't change. Unnecessary hardship result from strict application of the ordinance. The applicant states that the initial engineering review of the home indicated there's uncertainty regarding the stability of the existing foundation, and the strict application of the ordinance would not allow reconstruction of the home in the area of encroachment if it's needed for the foundation. Exhibit number ten is a photo of the property, and that's the end of my presentation if you have any questions for me. Yes. Yeah, the applicant's intention is that the footprint not change, but they're just uncertain about the foundational structure. That's, that's okay. At-grade patios are allowed to encroach into yards, so. Yeah, the deck can encroach up to twenty-five percent into the rear yard.
Are there any other questions for Lisa from the board? Terry, is there anybody here? He's not positioned?
Yeah, not composition, just a question.
A question, okay. All right, so I have to swear. I have to swear I'm in for a question? I have to swear I'm in?
Yeah, you have to take it off the recommendation agenda.
Okay. So I have to swear I'm in?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If you don't mind just coming to the table here, just have to swear you in. Yeah, and you can place your hand in the Bible, yeah. Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in a matter at hand? All right, you may proceed.
Excuse me, sir. Chair. Thank you.
Do you, do you need our name?
I need it.
Yeah, stay here.
Put it on, or do we need to?
Yeah, I think.
We're just talking about procedural.
Yeah, procedures.
Okay, I make a motion that we move this case to the
To the regular agenda.
To the regular agenda.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think he's just asking a question, that's it. Yeah. Who can take that question, you, Lisa, or Mr. Murray? Can I answer that?
I will say with construction, there will be like erosion control review as well. We do have erosion control staff that review all the building permits, but Mr. Murray, can I?
If you get a demolition permit and a grading permit, or if it's required, technically, we're under an acre, so you don't have to get a grade. But anything that would be required from erosion control.
Yeah, I don't know that his question's really about erosion.
That goes back to my prior question. They're not increasing the footprint of the building.
Right. So the purpose of the variance was because they want to use the footprint that exists to redo this home, to rebuild the home. And so the intention is not to be any closer than thirty-three feet as the corner exists today. The, you know, we would comply with the, with the ordinance. As far as runoff, I can't tell you if the runoff's coming from this property, if it's coming from next door, I don't know. Right, nineteen twenty-five. Right, and some of those. Right, okay. Now, all I can say is I don't know where this runoff comes from, and we would comply with the standards.
And is, I guess we can pass this information along to the builder?
Well, I guess we just need to make sure that the variance that we're approving is limited to the existing footprint and not an expansion because if, you know, if encroachment into that established rear yard is approved, it would, it would, I mean, if we're approving encroachment, are we, are we improving encroachment all along that, to that thirty-three-foot mark all the way down the property? So if they wanted to enclose that deck, i- if they wanted to, you know, put heated square footage where that deck currently is, would that be permitted when we granted this variance?
Correct, you would essentially change the required rear yard.
Right, so our approval wouldn't limit them. Their intent may be to limit to the existing footprint, but our approval would not limit them to that.
Yeah, from the aerial, the deck is already covered.
Right, but they could build a triangular thing, and they could, they could, they could, in theory, create impervious surface for the entire, like, right up to the thirty-foot established rear yard in a triangular fashion and all the way up to the side setback. And they could increase probably, that looks like maybe thirty percent or maybe, it may, you could almost double the square footage if you maxed out all the way to the setbacks and built a, you know, a wedge-shaped structure under the, and could you do that under the variance that we're granting?
Correct, and you can, you can place conditions on the approval if you wish to that are reasonably related to the request. I think in the past, there's been conditions that, you know, it uses the existing footprint, or I think we've had a French drain or other types of runoff measures.
So on the deck, the deck is accepted whether it's covered. As long as it's not heated. Cover for that.
Yeah, Lisa, am I correct that under the ordinance, if the owner wanted to, they could essentially create a brick patio, some kind of impervious surface at great level, around that entire area?
Yes.
It would not require a variance to do that.
That's correct, because it's not in a watershed overlay area.
That's right. And also in the U D O, five feet of this variance will be forty feet. We're asking for is twelve feet.
Yeah, under the fact's number eight, it does state that the applicant states they would like to do substantial renovations, vertical addition and/or reconstruction in the established rear yard. There's no indication that there would be additional heated square footage. Does that hold? I guess that's my question. I mean, in the findings, they're stating their intent, and is that intent not binding?
The variance would just be for twelve feet from the rear yard, so it would set a new rear yard for the lot. So the permitting staff would go by then.
Hey, are there any other questions for the applicant? Or, and I'm sorry, I blanked on your name already. Mr. Crawford? All right, I'm hearing none, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Murray.
So we're, where are we?
So I really sort of by de facto, since you've kind of opened it up to other people to speak, including Mr. Murray, you kind of de facto moved it to the regular agenda, I think is kind of the question, so, I mean, is that what you were asking, if you would, if Mr. Murray would like to present anything else? I think the board's kind of essentially moved in that direction.
I mean, I may be wrong for saying this, but in my opinion, since it wasn't an actual, he wasn't testifying against it, he was just asking more of a, of a architectural question. I think it can stay on the recommended agenda. Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah. Yeah, so.
No, because unfortunately, there's not any evidence that was really presented from that testimony. That was not, I mean, I would have to object to that, it's not being evidentiary, so.
Mr. Murray, while you're here, accept the condition that to the existing footprint?
Yeah, right, so if we didn't get the variance, we have a five-foot, so the U D O is going to give five additional feet when it comes in June. But there are certain parts of this, like, if we wanted to improve the deck and some other impervious areas that we could do without the variance. So the concern about impervious area, I don't.
I'm not asking about impervious area, I'm talking about heated square footage.
For the encroaching area?
Yeah.
I don't want anything that limits us under what we can do under the U D O. But you're asking for the existing heated square footage.
And I think that what has been presented to us seems to indicate, I think everybody on the panel is under the impression that the applicant is asking, and the question I asked, was the intent was not to expand.
Yeah, okay, I follow him. For the house, for the house that is heated on the corner that encroaches at thirteen feet, we will meet with that, yes. We just don't want to be limited on anything else that we can do under the ordinance in the exceptions for like the deck and brick areas and stuff like that. But as far as the corner of the house, we can consent to that. Sorry.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Murray?
I mean, I, I wonder if the applicant, since I believe this is more discussion than we typically have. We typically don't have the applicant speak if it's on the recommendation agenda, you've asked questions at this point. And I just think that might be, just for the record, if Mr. Murray and his client would like to present evidence, I think that we would offer you that opportunity at this point since there have been questions with respect to the petition. Typically, in recommendation agendas, only staff, there, once the petitioner speaks, then it becomes a regular agenda item.
Well, even though he's been confirmed for his attorney, and attorney's been presenting on his behalf?
You know, I just want to give him the opportunity to, if you would like to present evidence at this point. I believe since we have opened it up, it's moved from, but I'll defer to Jill, but I believe that this is more than we typically would do for a recommendation agenda item.
Yes, thank you, Terry. That's what I was trying to say earlier, but I appreciate the greater explanation. I would agree.
All right, okay, well, if that's said, is there a motion to move this case to the, from the recommended agenda to the? Well, it looked like he's pretty much been nodding, saying he wants to, yeah.
Ms. McCarter presented, that exhibit right there is mine. Ms. McCarter presented the evidence that we would stand on. The findings of fact are the evidence that we would stand on. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but we'd be willing to stand on the city's presentation of evidence.
I think we just made it big enough where it was.
You just got to make sure he has a full opportunity. Typically, you're asking the city questions, and they're responding, but it has gone beyond that at this point.
All right, any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right, um, thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you very much. Okay, um, is there a, uh, motion on the floor to approve or deny the variance? Okay, is there a second?
Hamed, second.
All right, motion was made to approve the variance by Mr. Floyd, second by, uh, Mr. Ham- Hamed. Now we're going to move to a roll call vote, Mr. Hamed?
Hamed, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Dryden?
I'm, yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Floyd, yes.
Wilson, yes, okay, variance has been approved. Now we're moving to our regular agenda, and the next.
Finding.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, guys, I haven't been here since December, so I'm a little bit rusty. All right. Yeah, that's.
I made the motion to approve the finding and facts, as.
A motion to approve the finding and facts and conclusion of law as written was made by Ms. Dryden, second by Mr. Floyd. Now move to a roll call vote, Mr. Floyd? Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Hamed?
Hamed, yes.
Wilson, yes. Again, my apologies, uh, it's my first meeting of the year, a little bit rusty. Okay, now we can move to the regular agenda. Huh? Now we can move to the regular agenda. All right, so next is case number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-zero-eight. Okay? Lisa, you may proceed.
All right, this is an accessory dwelling unit or A D U variance. The applicant is requesting a four-foot variance for the required six-foot side yard for an accessory dwelling unit. And I'll give you a minute to look over your finding.
Okay, Lisa, you may proceed.
Exhibit number one is a vicinity map of the property. Exhibit number two is a zoning map. The property is zone R three, and it's in an area of R three zoning. Exhibit number three is an aerial map. Exhibit number four is a close-up aerial map. There's the home, and here's the A D U structure. Exhibit number five is background. There's a single-family home on the property constructed in nineteen sixty-nine, and a detached garage constructed in nineteen ninety that's located in the established rear yard. The garage is located two feet from the side property line, which was the required accessory structure side yard when the garage was constructed. And since that time, the requirements changed, and now there's a three-foot required side yard for an accessory structure. The garage is non-conforming since it doesn't meet the current zoning ordinance requirements. In twenty-twenty-two, a building permit was issued for a garage outfit. Upfits to existing accessory structures don't require county building plan review or city zoning review. The outfit included three bedrooms and one full bathroom, but it was not permitted as an A D U, which would have triggered county building plan review and city zoning review. Exhibit number six is background. A notice of violation was issued after a neighbor complained that someone was living in the structure. Since the structure is being used for human habitation, it meets the definition of a dwelling, and is classified as an A D U instead of just a typical accessory structure like a garage or office space. The change of use triggers a required six-foot side yard for the A D U. The structure is located approximately two feet off the side property line. Exhibit number seven is the variance request. The applicant is requesting a four-foot variance to permit the conversion of the accessory structure to an A D U. You can see the close-up, it's about two-point-two feet. Exhibit number eight is the standards for granting a variance. The zoning ordinance requires that all the standards are met. A necessary hardship must result from strict application of the ordinance. The hardship must be peculiar to the property. The hardship must not result from actions taken by the applicant, and the request must be consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and uphold public safety. Exhibit number nine is considerations. Staff finds the request doesn't meet all the standards for granting a variance. The hardship results from actions taken by the applicant because the structure was permitted as a garage outfit rather than an A D U. The hardship does not result from conditions peculiar to the property because there's room within the compliant A D U building footprint that an A D U could have been constructed. So in yellow here is the compliant A D U building area, fifteen feet off the rear, six feet off the sides. Unnecessary hardships do not result from strict application of the zoning ordinance because there are other options for compliance. They could stop the use of the structure as an A D U, convert it back to a garage or another type of space, move the existing structure into the compliant building area, remove a portion of the existing structure that encroaches into the required six-foot side yard, and reverting the existing structure back to a garage and constructing a new A D U in the compliant building area. The request is not consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance because there's a required six-foot side yard dimension for all A D Us up to twenty-four feet in height in the R three zoning district. Exhibit number ten is photos. And that's the end of my presentation, if you have questions for me. And we also have the applicant here, and folks signed up to speak.
So. So Terry, I'm just the applicant. Do we have anybody in opposition?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and before I swear, um, the applicant in, does anybody on the board have questions for Lisa?
Can you explain to me some of the findings of fact? What does that mean?
So that means, I guess through their permitting portal, the county gets these applications submitted? And if it says garage outfit, they just don't look at plans, there's, doesn't trigger a zoning review. If it was permitted, if it came in as an A D U, then it would have triggered all those things.
Well, what is an up, what is, what's the definition of an outfit?
It's, um, what theirs was, was converting unheated garage into a heated area, heated and cooled area.
Is that what, on the application that they submitted?
Yeah, so here's some pictures of the application. So they submitted as a garage outfit. So it did say to divide heated area into three rooms, one full bath, and a hallway with electrical and plumbing connections as needed, but it wasn't permitted as an A D U.
So I guess if you were outfitting a garage, um, maybe your garage didn't have electricity and plumbing, and you wanted to add electricity and plumbing, so that would be an example of a garage outfit that would not be an A D U renovation.
So some people do it for home gym space, for office spaces.
But in their application, they actually indicated that they want.
Correct.
They the ones that selected garage outfit when it.
I, I don't have that information.
All right, so, um, do you have another question for?
Yeah, what, so the variance, um, what, what is the number, what, how many feet are we talking about? Four feet, um, so they are, uh, it's a six-foot, and they're encroaching to two feet? Okay, I, are we all, are we typically measuring from roof eaves or walls?
We have to measure from the roof eaves, um, because architectural features aren't allowed to encroach with the A D Us and accessory structures.
Okay. And that's consistent with all we, okay.
All right, um, good morning. If you could, please state your name and address for the court reporter.
Omar Nunez, at five-five-five-three Elsinor Place, Charlotte, North Carolina, two-eight-two-two-seven.
I'm the mother, it's Nunez, five-five-three, three-three-three, Elsinor Place.
Okay.
Two, twenty-seven.
All right, great, if you can please place your hand on the Bible, uh, and are you going to be speaking as well?
She can try.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Okay, all right, um, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand?
Yes.
All right, all right, you may proceed with your presentation.
Well, I don't have much of a presentation, but I do, okay, well, first of all, I want to state that we're not the ones that submitted for the permit. We, uh, construction company handled everything for the permits, uh, plumbing, electrical, all the work. So we weren't aware of that, uh, rule, of the six-feet rule from a, uh, A D U to the property line. So we didn't know any of that, um, before we, if we would have, if we would have, before we started the work, we would have stopped the work immediately and figured something else out, but, uh, we got that, that news about the, that rule after we had completed all the work and everything. But I do have a letter from the neighbors who it is encroaching on, um, saying that it's okay, that they, they do not mind, that it's encroaching on their, on their yard. What else? That's it, that's really all I have to say, if you guys have any questions for me. Uh, it, on the permits, it says thirty thousand, but it went over and it was about.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Pero cuánto por todo, exactamente?
Fifty-three thousand.
Oh, fifty-three thousand.
Is there a kitchen, or?
There is a countertop kitchen, there is, um.
Microwave?
Yeah, microwave, and then a, a little, you know those stoves with like the one that you put on a counter?
And a sink? Sink?
Yes, and a sink, uh, full bathroom, and a little kitchen, uh, dining area.
So you built it so that somebody could live in there and not have to live in the primary structure?
Yes, so the goal was, me and my mother, we, we bought this house, or I, she wanted a house. I, I'm not much for property owning, but I wanted to help her get a house, it was, it's the least I can do. I wanted to buy her a house, but I, I don't have that kind of job, so we, we took out a loan, we bought that house, and the goal was to turn the garage, because the detached garage was already there, it was already that far from the property line. So we were planning on turning it into a little living space for me, because I wanted to pay rent, I wanted to pay her rent, but, you know, I don't want to live with my mom, so I was going to live in the, in that little A D U and, and pay for the rent of, of the house. It was, it was the closest thing to me buying my mom a house. So we did that, and after the work was done, so I was living with my, I'm living with my brother right now in Clover, South Carolina. He has a house over there, and he should have been married by now. It's, it's already been a year, he was supposed to get married, and, because I, right now I'm splitting the mortgage with him, he can't pay it all on his own. So he was supposed to be married, so they can move in together, and I can move back over here. But he hasn't done that, so I can't leave him yet and go help out over there. So what we had to do was rent it out to someone, um, right now there's a couple living there. And that's, after they started living there, is when we got the, the notice of, oh, we're, we're too close, and, and. That's, that's all. Oh, no, lease? It's, it's a lease, it's a lease, yeah.
For the record, real quick, petitioner exhibit number one was submitted by Mr. Omar.
Thank you, and I just wanted to remind the board, um, that that letter, uh, is considered, it, it is hearsay, because the neighbor is not here, uh, to be questioned or cross-examined about any of the statements. So just wanted to keep that, um, in mind, as you know, hearsay's not specifically excluded, but it should be given only limited weight.
No, it meets the size requirement, it meets the rear yard requirement, so everything's fine.
Any other questions for the applicant on the board? All right, hearing none, uh, thank you very much. So we have somebody here in opposition?
Yes, Chair.
We'll start out with, uh, Ms. Whitley.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, please state your name and address for the court reporter.
Jane Whitley, and my address is fifty-five-fifty-nine Elsinor Place, uh, Charlotte, NC two-eight-two-two-seven.
Okay, and, uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand?
Yes, I do.
All right, you may proceed.
Okay, um, I live on the opposite side of the property from where the encroachment occurs. As you can tell, that is a cul-de-sac. To have additional dwelling there with no parking, they are already parking in their front yard, as one of the photographs shows. The homeowners park two cars in their front yard, which is a violation of city ordinance. And then they have additional cars parking in the driveway. At times, there are cars parked in front of my house. I only have about twenty-five feet of road frontage. And this is, um, where my trash receptacles and recycling receptacles have to be in my mailbox. And not so much from these people, but previous people that have lived there. When they have company and stuff, they park in front of my house and my, my trash, and does not get picked up, and my mail does not get delivered. So in, within that cul-de-sac, there are violations, not only from them. That is a big concern. There have been times I have not been able to back out of my driveway. I know there was a, a, a truck there just this week, or, you know, over the weekend. And it is a concern that emergency vehicles, fire police, and ambulance, whether they can access my property as well as the other properties there. I'm assuming that with the, with the three bedrooms, um, they have not indicated whether that would be rented as to one, like, one family. It, I'm assuming that the potential that they could rent three bedrooms to three individuals that would have three cars as well as their two cars, and that's going to be a big problem there. And that's my only, you know, that's my biggest concern. Is from a safety standpoint.
Before you, uh, return to your seat, I don't know if any of the board members have any questions for you.
When you said you live on the opposite side, can you just clarify, you live to the north of that red star, like, up?
Up the.
Thank you.
See it, all right. So any question?
Yeah, so what's showing there is my property line, there is, you know, a driveway there. So I have this much room of street front, usable street frontage to put trash, yard waste, and, and that kind of thing.
Thank you very much.
Teresa and Bart, let me guess.
Good morning to both of you. Before I swear you in, if you could please give your name and address for the court reporter?
Uh, my name is Teresa Riek, R I E K, uh, fifty-five-forty Elsinor Place, Charlotte, two-eight-two-two-seven.
And I'm Bart.
And, um, if you can place your hand on the Bible there. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand?
Yes.
You may proceed, I think, uh, Terry's pulling up your pictures now, so.
Okay, what I, what I'd like to do is kind of go back to the beginning a little bit on this, because some of it's slightly.
because some of it's slightly misleading. Um, where the surveyor's map that, that we had, that you had up earlier and the inset that showed the three foot to the front left corner of the garage and two feet to the front left corner of the eve. Um, when they, when they purchased this property, January twenty-first of twenty-two and did not immediately move in, which always kind of flags as odd, because normally people buy a house and the first thing they do is, you know, they're moving in. Um, shortly after, I don't know how long, maybe a month after they moved in or after they purchased it, contractors showed up and started working on the garage. Now, the application that they submitted says that it was an existing heated area. And I sent pictures that show it was actually, there's another, I sent another one. Uh, while you're here, let me show you one thing. If you look to the left of the garage, there is nothing in the yard between that fence and the garage. Okay? Do you see what I'm saying? There's nothing there. It's, it's just.
There's no heating in there yet.
There's nothing there. There's a, a fence to the back and then that building back there is on the property behind them. Okay? This here is a tiny little wood fence that the old man that lived there when he purch, when he built the garage, he, because it slopes off, so he built that there for kind of protection for him and his wife. Okay? Um, and as you see here, there's nothing behind the, the garage. There's nothing to the left of the garage as far as a heating and air conditioning unit. There was, it was not a heated structure. And ironically, I took this picture, if you scroll back out for a second, on December tenth of twenty-one. And it proves that it was a open-studded, simple garage. That back wall was a false wall with a door. It was his tool room where he stored his tools. That's all it was. Um, in March of twenty-two, I am the one who called building code. Because they were converting the gar, they converted the garage. They didn't upfit the garage. It implies that it was already a heated structure, which it was not. There was no plumbing to the structure. And the only electrical that was going to that structure was one twenty-five amp line that went from the house electrical panel through a PVC underground and back up to the right front corner of the garage. And right there you can see in that front corner, there's an outlet and that is where the, the electrical came into the garage. And that one twenty-five amp line was for two light bulbs and two outlets, one of them which the garage door opener plugged into. That's all that was in that structure. Um, so in March, I called the building codes because they had converted it to a three-bedroom apartment and there was no building permit. They had not applied for a permit. Um, and the, what they're stating in their application is that the city didn't tell them what they should have done. Otherwise they wouldn't have spent all that money. But the city didn't get involved until March thirtieth. That's when they showed up and put a stop work order on the door and told them, you have to apply for permits. You can't just come in and build a garage or build an apartment without the proper permitting. So the fact that they claim in here it was a heated structure is misleading. It was not. The next picture you're going to see, there's the AC unit that they put in for this garage. You see it there on the left between the fence and the wooden fence, if you will? That right there is the air condition, HVAC that they put in for that garage. The pad of that unit is actually pressing against that fence to the neighbors next door. It's actually, there's no side yard. There's no way you can get between the heating and air, the HVAC unit and the fence to go around. So on their application, it says they're actually requesting, what they've written on their application is that the code requirement is a six-foot side yard. And what they're requesting is a four-foot side yard, which is a two-foot reduction from what's required. That's what they've asked for. What they've actually put in is a zero side yard. There's no side yard anymore. And God forbid there were an emergency in that new apartment. That's going to put other people, other people's property at risk now. Because there's no buffer, there's no fire. I don't know what the word is that you guys use, but the, that, I'm assuming the side yard variance is to protect structures, you know, neighbor structures from one another. There's no side yard anymore. It's gone. Um, I know that when he built the garage originally, the, uh, previous owner, it was to code with that front left corner being at three feet. And he, it's not straight down the side yard either. The property line is straight. But he built the garage, he tilted it. So the left front corner of the building is at three feet. The left rear corner of the building is at five feet. And the reason he did that is because there's some trees back there and he didn't want to take the trees down. So they just, you know, cocked it over a little bit. Um, hold on, there was something else I wanted to add in there. What am I forgetting?
We're concerned as well about the additional parking and the cars that, uh, potential is there for with the three rooms in this garage. They could potentially rent it out to three separate individuals, like Jane was stating, three additional cars or possibly more. Um, they're parking in the grass in the front yard. They started that immediately and been doing that since they moved into the place or bought it. Everyone else in the, on the street, if they've had multiple vehicles, they've expanded their driveways to make accommodations for that. We'd kind of like to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood as it's been for, for years. We've lived there for thirty years ourselves. So that's a major concern. Um, Jane stated the safety issues. Uh, if we get three or four more cars in there and they stop parking on the grass, then they're going to be parking in the street and severely restrict the access to that cul-de-sac. Uh, so that's a big concern to us. From what we can ascertain from the packet that we, we received from you guys is that there's currently no, um, cert, CO, certificate of occupancy been issued for this structure. There's people living in there already.
Now, this isn't a potential to rent. They're already, there's people already live in that ADU. So without a certificate of occupancy.
We have concerns about the way the whole process has been done. Um, doesn't feel, feel to us like they've done things in a proper manner, kind of circumvented some of the rules, not paying attention to, um, what should be done. The city, uh, notice for this meeting was the yellow sign they posted in the front yard.
Was put up on, I believe it was Thursday, the sixteenth.
They immediately took it down. Fortunately, one of my neighbors got a picture of it before it was taken down and we wouldn't even know about this.
It was taken down the same day it was put up. The city put it up, right? You guys, somebody from the city goes out and puts a sign in the yard and just so happened that one of the neighbors saw it. And she took a picture of it and it came down immediately after she took that picture. So a lot of people on the street don't, didn't, don't even know that this is going on.
Yeah, we'd had more neighbors here to protest this, but I just didn't have the opportunity. I've been working six days a week, twelve hours a day. I haven't had the chance to talk to any of them to try to get more support for opposition of this. Um.
I don't want to nitpick, but according to the violations that were issued on this, section twelve point four oh seven says that the pedestrian entrance to this ADU shall be located to the side or rear of the structure. On one of these pictures, you see the whole thing and there's a front door right on the front. I mean, you know, I can sit on my front step and watch everybody come and go all day long.
There you can see the, the entrance doors on the front of the structure. So that doesn't meet code either.
So that's basically all. This low, yeah, that's the neighbors to the left of the property. The white car is, belongs to whoever's living inside the garage right now. And that young lady was actually sweeping out the garage the other day, you know, doing her normal. That was just trying to prove there's people already living in there. And there's another picture that speaks to the parking in the front yard. That's been going on since day one, but initially we weren't really concerned because they had contractors coming and going and there was work being done. Where are you going to park? Well, you know, you have to have allow for the contractors. So we kind of looked at, overlooked it initially. Because, you know, people are moving in and there's work being done, blah, blah, blah. But we also assumed that when all the work was done, that they would go back to the driveway. You know, people buy houses in our neighborhood because it's a quiet, well-established, pretty yards. Everybody tries to keep everything looking nice and now and they park in the yard all the time. Whether there's a car in the driveway or not, and as you can see, there's plenty of space in that driveway for the two extra cars, but they never park there. They use it as, like if. So, you know, the driveway from the street to the house, the driveway is used as an aisle, like if you were at the grocery store, pull up the aisle and then you pull into your parking spots.
I understand it's inconvenient to, we have a single lane driveway as well. We had three kids that grew up in the house and the driveway would be parked full of cars and your third one in and you gotta go and everybody's got to move their cars. It's inconvenient. I get that. We dealt with it for years. That's just a.
We still deal with it. We have two cars. He goes to work, I don't. If I come in after him in the morning at five o'clock, I better be out there moving my car. So that's, I mean, you don't, you just, you do what you have to do. But we don't park in our yard. We don't park in the grass.
There's multiple things that objections we have. A lot of the rules seem to have been circumvented, misrepresented. Things don't meet code. The parking issues, the additional cars that are going to be coming in. We have some major objections to this ADU.
So the door orientation for the ADU, um, is only for an ADU located within a principal structure. So like one that's internal to a home, but for a detached ADU, you can have the door facing forward. It doesn't address where the door has to be faked for the pedestrian entry. Um, the HVAC equipment, um, if the board were to grant the requested variance, that would be taken care of by the, um, new side yard because HVAC can encroach up to fifty percent. And it's a little deceiving if Terry can pull back up my survey slide. It's actually one point five feet to the HVAC. So if the two-foot, um, side yard is granted, that fifty percent would take. Still need to get permitting. If, if need to get permitted as an ADU. I'm sure there's all kinds of inspections that they need. The driveway has to be the same as the principal structure and there has to be one space. So for the, a, a single family, you have to have two spaces. So what they would do is, uh, they would accommodate that by each eighteen feet of the driveway. So it would be accommodated. But by city ordinance, that's, um, separate from the zoning ordinance, you, you park in an unimproved area. But that would be a separate.
And I would just like to point out that this drawing is very deceiving as you saw from the actual picture of the AC unit. It says that it's going to encroach into it by fifty percent. But there is no side yard anymore. You have building, AC fence. It's on the fence. So to say that it's, you know, well, it'll encroach by fifty percent. No, it takes up the two feet.
This is the survey and it's measuring to the property line. So if you see the HVAC is one point five feet to the property line and the, um, they're requesting a two-foot side yard. So fifty percent of the two-foot would allow the HVAC to be up to one foot from the side yard. So they would be within that.
I don't understand what that.
Oh, yes, it is a certified survey. I'm sorry.
Yes, in their application, it's, hold on. This was the variance application zoning ordinance that they filled out on December twenty-ninth. Um, hold on, let me find the one that says. I guess it saves.
It's page three of three. It's the last boxed note. Uh, page three of three on the building permit application. Under where it says permit note.
Oh, yeah, under the permit notes. Page three of three. Does to dividing the existing and heated area into three rooms. Our concern mainly is from what I've read and their objection that the city should have told them or they wouldn't have spent all this money. I don't know how much money they'd already spent before the city ever even knew they had gone in. So when the city inspector came in and stopped the work, I don't know how much of it had already been completed. I do know that there was already insulation all the way throughout and, and the, um, interior walls studs had already been constructed. That's when we called the city and complained that there was no building permit. The garage door was already gone and the front wall and the new front door was on the building. That is how the city inspector found it. And so as far as the permit notes, notes saying that it was an existing heated area, I do, I have no idea what the inspector was told. Obviously, I didn't go across the street and ask him. But that, it wasn't that. Well, the C, they got the stop work order on March thirtieth. Um, and then, and then they had to apply for permits and whatnot. Um, what I'll tell you is this, on the day the inspector came out and put the stop work order on, he left and the contractors and whoever else was there stood around and waited for about five or 10 minutes and they went back into the garage and continued working. I called the city back again that afternoon and told them. And the man on the phone was, well, yeah, we already have this information. The inspector's already been out. I said, I understand that. You're not hearing me. The inspector came, put a stop work order on the door. They waited five minutes and they're back to work. They're working as we speak. I can hear the drilling and the, the guns and, and everything going off. The hammering, thank you. So then the inspector came back the following day, I believe it was. It was a day or two later he came back. And then they actually stopped and the contractors were slinging their tools and material in their trailer and they all left. Very shortly thereafter, several days later, the contractor came back and that is when they started working on upgrading the house. So they hadn't even moved into the house yet. They went straight into the garage. Did I answer your question? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I, you know, I think when we're talking about hardship, and we're talking about constructing under the assumption that they're doing something legal, I think it's, I think it's important to have that in the findings of fact. Is there any, do we have factual information we can put in the findings of fact about the timeline of the the stop-work order specifically, maybe?
There was no record of a stop-work order.
Okay.
There is a case number from the zoning notice of violation, that 2022-0057372, which was from '22, not '23. And on the application, actually, it does say, hold on, let me go back. It's not there. It's here. On the variance application zoning ordinance, page seven at the bottom, and they're referring to, on December 29th of '22, and they refer to that case 2022-0057372, they had to check off, "Has work started on this project?" They checked yes. "Did you obtain a building permit?" It says yes. It's slightly misleading, because the building permit didn't come until after they started working on the project. But then the next one is, "Have you received a notice of violation or stop-work order for this project?" And they checked yes. I imagine they're, I don't have a copy of their, I'm sorry.
But the notice of violations is separate from the stop-work order. So, they, they, they came in and they were working without a permit. From, this is how, this is the timeline as I, as I see it, but... Right, right. Well, I think the way that, the problem I'm having is the way that it reads here, it looks like the, a permit was issued in error, or, or it's, it implies that perhaps, and that, and that speaks to the hardship of them having to rip it out, or, or whatever. And without, but I don't think that's, but that didn't really feel like it represents what, what happened. I feel like there's some facts in here that are missing that make this, make the way it reads sound differently than the way it went down, I guess. If there, and maybe there's some finding, some facts in here that I'm missing that we need to, that was not... No, okay.
As you're deliberating, I think found that there was no record of a stopped work order. If you want us to share that on the screen.
You have it?
Oh, there is a stop-work order.
There is not. Oh, there, okay.
There's not, okay.
Sharing that there is not.
All right. So, just for the sake of time, I know we have some other people to speak, and I'm sure maybe the applicant may wanna come up after that. Are there any other questions for, uh, the neighbors here? Thank you very much.
If the applicant wants to ask the neighbors any questions, they have that opportunity also.
He just, he just said no. Said no, yeah. Ms. D?
Last one, Douglas.
The last one?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning. Uh, please state your name and address for the court reporter.
Dee Austin, and I live at 5548 Elsinore, so I'm across the street.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter at hand?
Yes.
All right, make proceed.
The concern that I have agreeing with Ms. Whitley is the parking, mainly the parking. In case of emergency vehicle, she's already stated that, and I think that had happened once before, where somebody was parked there in the circle. It's a small cul-de-sac. It's not like huge. It's just a small area. And the emergency vehicle came in, and, you know, there was an issue there. We've also had, you know, seen the huge recycling truck trying to turn around, the trash trying to turn around in that circle, and the cars are parked there. It's hard for them to do it. So, my question is, where are they gonna park their cars? If, I mean, are you gonna expand the driveway to, and, you know, lay some concrete down in the front yard?
Yes.
That's my question. Yeah, since you're already parking there, make it a bigger driveway. And will that be done before, you know, three people move into the place? Three different people with lots of cars?
It was just for me. It was just for me. I can't move, I can't move in yet, so, um, we had to rent it out, and right now, there's only a couple living there, like, it's actually two men, and they're living there.
Yeah, so that's my...
Oh, and they don't have a vehicle right now.
Okay, yeah, right now. Yeah, so I'm just concerned about parking and safety in that area. I mean, is this gonna up your property value? I mean, the property value gonna go up in the whole neighborhood? I don't know, but I'm opposed. Due to the parking and the safety, I'm opposed.
Anybody on the board have any questions? All right, hearing none. Mr., uh, is my senior name correct? Did you wanna have a chance to move on? You don't have to swear. You're fine, yeah. You can go ahead and...
Oh, uh, no, I...
I, I don't, we don't know if you wanted to have a rebuttal to what you're...
Everything that, uh...
So, um...
As for the, the, with the, if you can go a little forward to the pictures where it shows the HVAC.
Keep going back, keep going. That, that, that one right there.
We think we might be able to move this a little closer and put it all around. That's something I'm talking about just now, but for your concerns of, you know, being separated, we might be able to move, put a fence, but also for the HVAC, I think we can move it to the other side of the, of the garage. We can do anything to get this variance. So, if, if it takes moving the HVAC to the other side of the garage, that's fine. Also, before, while we were applying for the variance, we tried to buy the, the extra three feet of land from our neighbor, and they weren't comfortable selling, because then we wouldn't need the variance if we bought those three feet, or four feet, I think. And they weren't comfortable, because it was gonna make everything messy if they try to sell their house later on in the future. It was, it was just gonna get everything too convoluted. So, they weren't comfortable selling, but that's why they wrote us this letter saying that they don't mind. Forget what else, what other issues you guys had that I, I could address.
They had a lot of issues with the parking.
As you suggested, we, we can put cement down on, on where we're, where we're parking on the other side of the, of the driveway, and that is, that's something that we can also do.
Um, do you have a question?
Yeah.
When, I've seen that when the building permit was issued, it was issued as a garage uplift. Was it always your intention to have people live there?
Yes, it was always our intention.
Why did you let your contractor put it as an uplift?
We, we don't know the whole process. We, I'm just a regular Joe. I don't know what it takes to, to get a permit or build a garage.
Ultimately, you are the property owner, and you are responsible for that contractor that is on your property and what he permits.
Right.
And, I mean, all, it says the uplift, and uplift, and uplift. And it says occupancy, residential, single-family, but you can't find a, a single...
Right, yeah, that'll be our next one. It's not theirs. Someone living in the main house. Because right now, it's, I don't live there, but my sister's there, my stepbrother's there, my brother, but, well, no one. Yes. I know. Yeah, and I, again, if we don't get this variance, we are gonna have to go after, because we're trying to handle it without having to sue the, the contractor company, because that's just gonna take a whole, probably more money and a whole lot of time. So, we try to get the variance first. If we don't get it, then we're gonna have to go after the contractor, and that's, that's gonna be a whole other, other deal.
Does any other board members have a question for Mr. Alvarado? And I don't know if folks in opposition, if you want to respond to anything that Mr. Alvarado just said. Nunes. Okay, I see Alvarado.
That's two last names.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Again, we, we weren't the ones that filled out the application for the permits. It was all the contractor. They, they handled everything.
Another house.
Right.
All right, thank you.
I guess I have one last, one question. So, what percent of the construction was complete prior to the application for a garage outfit?
A percent, I do not know. I wasn't living there the entire time. I was in Clover, South Carolina with my brother. Okay, um, she's saying some stuff, the dividers, not sure what that is. But yeah, there was some work done. Again, we, I, I thought only inside, if you're doing work inside, you didn't need a permit to do work inside. That's, that's what we were under the impression of. But, yeah, once, oh, and once they told, put the stop-work order, we, they didn't go right back to work at five minutes later. They went to get everything out and, and start gathering their stuff. So, it sounded like they were working. They weren't working.
And so, there, there was an operable door, a garage door, right? And so, was the exterior wall that infilled the garage door, was that started, or?
I have no idea. Oh, okay. So, they had started work without a, a contractor, like, without a company
Right.
on the garage. It was just, I think, like, a couple guys doing the work inside. That's when we got the stop-work order, and we were told we needed permits. So, then we decided to get a, an actual company, and then they handled the permits, the work.
Perfect, yeah, that all makes sense.
A Y M Incorporated.
That's, that's what I needed. Thank you.
Yeah.
Somebody working on it before you?
I think a couple weeks. Like, it, it was not that long. Unless that's long for you guys, then it was a couple weeks.
Isn't there a rule that says you don't need a permit if the...
I believe you still need a permit. You don't need a general contractor's license.
I, I think I got, I think I feel pretty comfortable with all the information I have.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant from the board, or from, I'm just calling you guys the neighbors, and I don't wanna say your opposition, you know, but the neighbors. I wonder if any of the questions for applicant. Good, okay. I got it, I got it, I got it. I'm just trying to give everybody a chance, you know, yeah.
Yes, we got a copy. It is not two men living there. She said, the way she said it in Spanish made it seem like it was two guys. It's actually a, a couple, a man and a woman, and I'm guessing they have a child, too. Yes.
All right, great. Well, I think we're gonna stop right there. Thank you very much for coming today. This concludes the, the, uh, this case. Right now, what we're gonna do as a board, we're gonna, we're going to deliberate. While we're deliberating, no one can ask us questions. It's gonna be very tempting for you to do that, but it's against the rules here. Uh, so, we're gonna have deliberations now. Thank you very much. You want to take a five minute break?
That's fine.
I should be back in, at 10:36.
Yeah, I think we do, are there somebody on our K twelve team? Whether it's that or the mentorship one. She's, we're, I'm kinda working on an internal one, an internal internship. She's... I don't know. So, um, trying to plug into the I Pals program. Don't look. Tucked up there. Yeah, our office director, Sam Forty, was this.
I was, I was, I was gonna suggest it, man.
I was ready to put him in the room.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know. But I was, I was, I was. Alright. Okay. Alright, so we're about to do deliberations. I'm just only standing up, because I'm freezing. But who, who would like to start?
I think I can start. So I, I feel like, I understand the complaints of the neighbors, I, I get all that, but really, ninety percent of all that is, is permitted in your area. The number of people parking, and the, and that, and all that really pertains to use by right. And they have the, the, to write, the right to use their property that way, if they had a legal ADU, and the only thing standing in their way from this legal ADU is the six-foot setback. So in thinking about that six-foot setback, you know, I think that if, if they had, you know, in reading the findings of fact here, and, and understanding the timeline, that like, I did not agree with this at all, I felt like they absolutely were, should be granted a variance in this situation. The, and I think an unnecessary hardship would certainly be having to reverse construction, I, I don't think it is, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's reasonable to assume that somebody could move a compliant building, or, or construct a compliant building when they're dealing with existing construction. The, uh, you know, so there, there's things specific about the property, I think, that, that result in the, in the hardship, I think their request is, is consistent with the spirit and purpose of the zoning warrants, but I really think the actions of the applicant created this hardship, and that that action, which is not reflected in the findings of fact, unfortunately, is that they began significant outfit of a structure without a zoning, without, without a building permit whatsoever. You know, and I think that a case could be made for a, an honest and diligent application of a building permit, and, and having been issued in error as a garage outfit, and, and them having a legitimate hardship, but I think anyone that is upfitting a structure to the extent that they're upfitting, I think, I think it's reasonable to assume that they should have a building permit for that, that extent, and so I feel like they, they got themselves ninety percent down the road into this existing condition. And so they, they, they've kind of inflicted this on themselves in that situation, so I, I would, I'm not leaning toward granting this variance.
Mr. Hamid?
Yeah, I agree with all that's been said thus far, this does kind of remind me of another case that we heard recently, again, not apples to apples, but kind of similar where, you know, general contractor comes in, and the intent of the homeowner is to do the right thing, general contractors, you know, that is part of the due diligence, homeowners should do their due diligence, but it's a complicated system that we have, especially when it comes to ADUs and zoning, and sometimes people aren't experts, and that's why they go out and hire a general contractor, and, you know, they shift the responsibility, but they don't technically shift the legal responsibility that they have. All that being said, again, it's interesting to hear the, the impact of an ADU, and how this is gonna start to change the dynamics of these single-family neighborhoods, especially as we move into other zoning, and the U D O, so it's interesting to hear through some of the impacts. It's, it's also interesting to hear from the neighbors in opposition, that it's less about the ADU as it is about the process they went through, and also the impact, right, the parking, the safety, I hear all those concerns, and some of those, you know, we can rectify through just doing the right thing, and it's important as we move into the U D O to understand the impact of what we're doing to these neighborhoods. All that being said, I do think, although it is the responsibility homeowner to do their due diligence, I do think based on some other cases we heard, that they were just misinformed by the, the general contractor, and for that, I kind of lean towards giving them the variance in this case.
Mr. Riden?
I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about this, it, in the broader sense, it worries me as we move into the new U D Os. With building structures and ADUs and, and variances, and, and I understand the concern of homeowners trying to navigate this field, and so you do tend to rely on your general contractor to tell you what, I mean, the contractor had to know he was building a single-family residence, and yet he applied for an outfit, and I'm thinking that's because he knew it wouldn't fly as a U D, as an ADU. And I'm sorry that it's out of compliance, and I'm sorry that it's, it doesn't fit, but when do we stop making exceptions? And I know people come to us because it's an exception. My feeling, it, because it's, it's so close to the property line. And I mean, they're close to the property line already, because they're already inside the six-foot. Now they want another four feet, and then you put an air conditioning unit, so now you got one foot. I, I don't know how I'm gonna vote, I'm leaning toward upholding the zoning quest to not approve this variance. But, what do you say, John?
Um, I'm actually leaning towards granting it, I agree with most of what has been said so far. I understand the, the neighbors' concerns, but on that, I will say, like, the fact that they could do this but for the fact that they're encroaching, to me, makes the parking issues kind of irrelevant, it, it's something that, again, we wouldn't be here but for the fact that it's built a little in the side yard. The concerns about the C O and the parking, those are things that other departments within the city are responsible for enforcing. So they're parking on the street, they're parking in the garage, they've gotta go through permitting, all that stuff gets handled somewhere else. Our question is, do they get four feet in the side yard? Their neighbor has said, who's directly impacted by that, has said they're okay with it. Unnecessary hardship, I think, you know, spending fifty thousand dollars and wasting it, I think is certainly an unnecessary hardship. You know, the hardship resulting from something peculiar to the property, little less sure about where that factor comes in, but I would say we did see in the application things about the shape of the property and, and the angle of the lot line, and so I can say that there is something peculiar there. If the building permit application was purely, it just said they're doing a garage outfit, then I would certainly agree that that was something that was misleading, and would probably hold the owner more accountable. But I think, given that the notes here talk about the fact that it uses the word converted, it talks about adding walls, it talks about adding a bath and a hallway, I don't think it's on the homeowner who goes and hires a contractor to go behind them and say, well, this is what your permit said, and are you sure that outfit, garage outfit is the proper designation to select when you're filling out the permit application? I, I think we have certainly granted variances in other cases where there's been kind of, a permit was issued or something by the city based on maybe something the city should have caught. And then on the last point, again, I mean, I think allowing the encroachment doesn't really create any material impact, I mean, it, it's something that they could have done but for the encroachment, so I think granting is, you know, consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance, so I'm inclined to grant it, but it sounds like we're pretty divided on this one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm torn too. Like, Mr. Hamid said, you know, we've seen cases like this before, where the builder or the contractor will tell the applicant that, you know, everything's okay, and then next thing you know, they get a letter from the city saying that they violated the zoning permit. And I know the applicant said that he wanted to do this to have a house for his mom, I mean, what, what son or daughter wouldn't want to do that? But again, I know we have guidelines that we have to follow, that's from the zoning board, as well as the city, so I'm, I'm still torn, I'm just have this, I guess just have to see how it goes when we get to voting.
Um, I have a legal question, do we have the ability to put any other conditions on it that would address kind of the concerns about Airbnb, or renting to three different people with three different cars, or is there anything like that that we can do?
I think that goes to the use of the property, and that's really outside of your purview.
You were about to say something.
Kind of divided, maybe I can sort of offer a few things to think about or for discussion. You know, when, when looking for hardships, certainly costs, you know, it comes up in cases, but the hardship, a financial hardship should not be the only factor. Hardships that result, conditions that are peculiar to the property, that's one I kind of maybe wanted you to think about and discuss, you know, hardships peculiar to the applicant is different than hardships peculiar to the property. So remember, I think I talked about this a little bit before, about personal circumstances should not be taken into consideration in, in that regard, and...
Wait a minute, let me just ask a clarifying question on that, are you saying that it is not a hardship, if the denial of the variance would result in having to undo the construction? I mean, it would, if you were, hey, we gotta tear off the side of a house, you would say that's a hardship, right?
That, that there is a hardship there, and the courts have recognized that, but the hardship should not just be solely financial, and this board has, and a couple of you were not on the board at this time, but the board has required access, or the...
Structures.
Yes, structures to be removed that did not meet the other qualifications. So I know there's some discussion of what we have granted in the past, but you also have denied in the past and required that some accessory structures actually be, be removed, even when permits have been issued, so things to think about, discuss further, maybe y'all can come to a agreement or not.
I think it comes back to, if they had just outfitted the garage, we wouldn't be here. Because it was the footprint that was already there, it's an outfit, so used as an, an office, or craft room, or just to have access to a bathroom that wasn't inside the house. But it's not an outfit, it's a three-bedroom kitchen, bathroom. And if you're gonna do that, you have to have permits. And even before they got a contractor, they just, they went in and just started this. And either they got in over their heads, or they didn't know, or they got, the inspector came out and said, look, you need permits. I mean, that, that's where I'm coming from, because that, to me, that is a result of property owners creating their own problems.
What's your definition of garage outfit?
Well, that's what I asked Lisa, and she said a garage outfit could be where you eat it, I guess, and put a bathroom in to use it, but not as living space, as, not permanent living space, like bedrooms and, and bathrooms and kitchens, but to use it as an, an office space, I guess.
Remember, if we ask, that's the question we gotta go into, go out and...
I'm just repeating what you, no, I'm not asking her another question, I'm saying that's what she told me, she said as a, some people use it as a home gym, some people use it as, you know, a, an office space.
Well, understand, Lisa's a zoning administrator that understands what the code says, but I'm saying you as a regular individual, if somebody says, I'm gonna up, upfit my garage, like, you're supposed to understand that distinction? I mean, you're putting that on the owner, I don't think that, like, an individual property owner is gonna understand when you say, I'm upfitting my garage. I mean, you're putting that on the owner. I don't think that, like, an individual property owner is going to understand when you say, I'm upfitting my garage. That means, well, I can put an office in there, but I can't put a bed in there.
Well, I would because we outfitted our garage. We put.
You renovated your garage, right? You could renovate it in different ways, right? But to me, the term outfit, if you want to say it has some kind of legal meaning, I, I think in common parlance, it could have a bunch of different meanings. And I wouldn't render a decision based purely on that word outfit.
Well, I'm not rendering it totally on that, but I'm not rendering it totally on that it's going to cost them to tear it down either. I mean, what I'm saying is there's nuances in all of this. And the, the letter from the next door neighbor, as Joe pointed out, we can, we can talk about it, but it's hearsay because that person is not here to affirm that that's what they're saying. I'm not saying they're lying, but it's just, it's just a piece of paper.
They're also not here objecting either.
That's true. But my feeling is you got yourself in deep water and now they're asking us to bail the boat out after it's sinking. Because if we approve this variance, because, okay, it's only four feet. But, but we can't put any conditions on it because it's by right unit of the property. So once they put it in this three bedrooms and two, in a bath, if they wanted to rent it to three people, they could. So, I mean, what do you do in good faith? They say they're going to put in a, a pad, a concrete pad. Well, unless you keep calling zoning to come out there and look and they got to, they've got to see that the cars parked on the, in the yard or they, they can't sight them. And if they can't see it, then they can just keep doing it. It's, it's just, it's a catch 22 for everybody.
It is, it is.
I'm looking at this, unnecessary hardship would not result, the hardship does not result from conditions that are peculiar to the property. Well, the, the property, the, the footprint for the garage was already there. And because it was already there, it's kind of grandfathered. Unless they had put in this, basically a rental unit. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm feeling, that, that, that it was kind of, it was a mess from the start.
It's not the first mess we saw. It's been like this. Yeah, yeah, no. Yeah. All right. Are there any other comments you want to make?
You know, I, the, the only, the only finding of fact that I was having trouble with was the hardship as it results from the actions of the applicant. And it, and I'm, and because we're, we're talking about precedent and, and going back to these things and, and looking them over, I, I'm really worried that there's no reference to them having this, this action prior to the the violation. So I, it's just, you know, if this thing were, if this decision were stood up on it, on its own as it is, I'm not sure that I would feel great about using this as a, as a precedent. I don't know if there's any fact that, I don't know that there's any fact in here other than the admission that there was construction done prior. I don't know.
Well, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing but different ways. I think at this point, we're just going to have to go, go into the period of voting. Just see what the chips fall from doing that. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and end deliberations. And now we are going to go into a period of voting. So is there a motion on the floor to approve or deny this variance? Now, remember, we can't add any extra things to it. It's got to be an up, an up or down of vote.
Well, the motion would have to be to uphold the, you're uphold the zoning administrator's recommendation to deny the variance.
Yes.
Or to overturn zoning administrator's recommendation. So that's how, that's one of those two.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the variance.
I couldn't hear you.
So I make a motion to approve the variance.
So to, to.
This is either to grant or deny the variance.
Yeah, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Hamid, second.
A digression has been made to grant the variance. And that was made by Mr. Floyd and seconded by Mr. Hamid. Now we move into a roll call vote. Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Uh, Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, no.
Mr. Floyd?
Floyd, yes.
All right. Wilson, yes. So if my math is correct, the, the variance has been approved, right?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes that case, but before we conclude it, before we conclude it, finish. So before we conclude it, we're going to go into, we have to put a finding of facts and clues of law.
So paragraph 10, I think there's a typo. It says to a neighbor compliant, I think should be complaint.
I thought my eyes were messed up. Thanks.
And then I think otherwise it's just addressing the conclusions of law. Unnecessary hardship would delete the word not result. The hardship delete does not and say the hardship results from paragraph three, the hardship does add not result from actions. And then paragraph four, the requested variance is delete the word not consistent with spirit and ten, blah, blah, blah.
Did you get that, Candy?
Can you repeat that real quick, John?
Yeah, so paragraph 10, did you get that one?
Yes, sir.
All right. Then on the conclusions of law, paragraph one, delete the word not.
Okay.
Paragraph two, delete the words does not and add S to the end of result. Paragraph three, add the word not between does and result. Paragraph four, delete the word not.
Thank you.
And also under finding of facts, you have the number two twice. As number two, the property is located at the address and then again, number two, the subject property. Yeah, yeah, it just needed to be ordered at.
Do we change 25? The request is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yep, it's consistent. That's correct.
Number sixteen, number nineteen, and number twenty-one as well.
Yeah.
So sixteen would be the hardship does not result. And number eighteen. Did you say eighteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. All right, the hardship does result. Hardship results, I'm sorry.
Twenty-one, do we?
Twenty-one, and this, yeah, do not.
Do we, the twenty-three, the existing ADU could be moved within a compliant building area portion? I, I don't know.
We need that?
I don't, I don't think that's needed. I mean, it just seems unreasonable to assume somebody could move a slab on great structure.
So we just remove number twenty-three?
Yeah, I just don't think it's necessary for the purposes of the decision that was made. If we were going to deny it, I think it makes sense to keep it.
And twenty.
Twenty-two is the same way.
Yeah.
And twenty-four. So, yeah, I would say delete twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Twenty.
I had twenty coming out too.
Yeah.
Are there any additional facts that you could add that would go along with number nineteen? Conditions specific to the property, can you name a few?
I think the shape of the property.
The configuration of the existing structures.
Is that going again?
Let's go on at the end of nineteen. The hardship results from conditions specific to the property, semicolon, shape of the property and the configuration of existing structures.
Okay.
Any other edits, finding of facts and clues of law? Hearing none, is there a motion to improve the finding of facts and conclusions of law as amended?
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion's been moved by Ms. Dryden and seconded by Mr. Floyd. Now moving to a roll call vote. Mr. Floyd?
Floyd, yes.
Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Uh, Mr. Court?
Court, yes.
Mr. Hamid?
Hamid, yes.
Wilson, yes. Thank you very much. Last thing on the agenda is the approval of the January minutes. Everybody should have a copy of that.
I can vote on that, right? Even though I'm in here. I can share it. I watch that every time.
All right.
Need to approve. Yeah, whoops. Yeah. Can't approve that.
Wrong date at the top. It should be twenty-three.
You get a pass for January. Wait, and so, yeah, and then it's the header as you get through on.
Yeah. But, yeah, approve. Yeah.
I have your motion to. It's as amended.
So moved?
Second.
To a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Floyd. Mr. Floyd?
Floyd, yes.
Ms. Dryden?
Dryden, yes.
Court, yes.
Hamid, yes.